Good evening. I am Mayor Todd Alcott, the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky. Hereby call a special meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, beginning 4:30 Thursday, April 1st, 2021, in the Commission Chamber of City Hall, located on 101 Zero College Street. Mrs. Jackson, will you please do a roll call?
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Perigin.
Here.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Here.
Mayor Alcott.
Here. First agenda item is approval of minutes, regular meeting, March 16th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Melinda Hill, second by Commissioner Sue Perigin. We have the minutes. Any discussion on the minutes? No discussion? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-42.
Municipal Order approving the promotion of Justin Donnelly to the position of Fire Engineer in the Fire Department.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. So any discussion on this, Mr. Mazel?
Thank you, Mayor. We have a retirement. Billy Daniels is leaving us after 20 years as an engineer. I'd like to congratulate Billy for his service and thank him for his service to the City of Bowling Green and citizens in serving at the Fire Department. I'd like to ask Chief Coulson to step up and make his recommendation for filling Mr. Daniel's spot.
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor Commissioners. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to present the recommendation of promotion to you for a Fire Engineer opening. As the City Manager mentioned, retirement of Billy Daniels. I too want to take the opportunity to thank Billy for his 20 years of service to our community. Promotional testing for Fire Engineer was completed in the fall of last year with 14 members completing the process. The promotional testing for Fire Engineer consisted of a written exam and assessments of the member's performance while conducting tasks related to driving and operating multiple fire apparatus. We strive to develop our members and prepare them to perform at the next level of their career. The member I'm recommending this evening has pursued opportunities. He's attended training, completed professional development courses. He's obtained numerous certifications and credentials to validate that he possesses the knowledge and the skills needed to advance within our department. With that, I'm pleased to recommend Justin Donnelly for promotion to Engineer. If I can get Justin to stand, please. Justin was hired as a firefighter in September of 2013, so he has a little over seven years of service with our organization. Among many certifications and credentials, Justin holds certification as an Emergency Medical Technician. He's an airport firefighter. And relevant to his new position, he's certified as a fire apparatus operator for both pumper's and aerials. Notably, Justin finished with the top overall score of the 14 members that were competing for the promotional, through the promotional testing process. During his career, Justin has been a solid performer for our organization, has assisted with numerous special projects and also on our apparatus committees. With that, it's certainly my pleasure to recommend him for promotion, and I'm certain that he is prepared to serve in his new role as Fire Engineers. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions from our Commissioners? We won't say congratulations yet. Let's do a roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Justin. Municipal Order Number 2021-43.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointments of Tristan Alexander, Brandon Boards, Brock Cleary, Jamal Combs, Michael Tyler Gentry, Hayden James, Michaela King, Rashad Trimble, and Andrew Ward to the position of Police Officer in the Police Department.
So moved. So moved.
Second.
All right. Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown.
We are in need of more police officers, and this is our proposed new class that we are wanting to bring in, and I'd like to ask Erin Holsey, your HR Director, to come up and make the recommendations.
Thank you. Very excited to be here today. So this process started back in October. As you know, it's a very long process, and we weren't sure how many people would want to be police officers, and we were delighted to find that a lot of really bright people wanted to be part of the Bowling Green Police Department and be positive contributors to our community. So very, very excited about all of the people that we had an opportunity to meet and interview in this process. A total of 86 applications, and we did have 50 show up for the POPS test. So we started a little bit slower than normal, but we caught up about at this phase. So 45 passed POPS, and we scheduled 24 for the polygraph psychological, and we ended up having 23 go through the background process. We interviewed 17 applicants, and we have nine that we are recommending for appointment today, most of which are here. There is one that was not able to attend. So multiple people were involved. Many members of the Police Department helped us everything from POPS testing to recruiting. The detectives who helped us do background checks, there's so many people who helped us with this process. One thing that I do want to point out is the clear success of our cadet program. Behind me are three, well, we are appointing three, but there's two here today that were, that are current cadets, and so this continues to be a really successful recruitment tool. We also have one previous intern. So we know that what we're doing over there for recruitment is really successful and helping us on our way. So if you all would like to stand when I call your name, we would like to recommend Andrew Ward, who is not with us today, Tyler Gentry, Hayden James, Brock Cleary, Jamal Combs, Michaela King, Rashad Trimble, Brandon Boards, and Tristan Alexander. I'm available if you guys have any questions.
Like a fine group in front of us. So I will say my comments that I believe the cadet program is a phenomenal program. Can the two cadets raise their hand that are here? Okay, that's phenomenal to see you two continue on to the police force. Commissioners?
Same here. I'll probably save some of the comments. You know, I'm rooting for each and one of you guys. It's amazing to see that you guys are going to go on, and you're young, but you're going to go on and to protect and serve, and I'm rooting for each one of you guys to, you know, to join our, you know, especially welcome to Bowling Green for anybody that's new to Bowling Green. You know, we hope you guys stay and kind of call this home for a very long time, but I'm rooting for you guys.
I'll join in the comments and just say, we just have the world's finest Police Department here in Bowling Green, and I'm so excited that you get to be part of this incredible Police Department that we have here. And I know that if you are selected, that means that you are here because you want to serve and love our community, and to show up when someone's having a bad day, you want to make it better. And so I'm just so excited to get to know you all, and I'm excited about the work that you're going to do to help our community get stronger and more connected with each other.
Congratulations to each one of you. Look forward to long careers.
Welcome to being an employee of City of Bowling Green. We appreciate you.
All right, roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations.
Municipal Order approving the appointment of Sandra Franklin and reappointment of Harry Ford to the Hobson House Commission.
So moved.
I believe this is mine. I actually had the opportunity to talk to the Hobson House Commission, and I was able to get a little bit of feedback. This Mr. Ford, you probably recognize the name. It actually, actually has the Ford furniture. And the story that I heard recently, they had to do some moving of the furniture in the Hobson House. And of course, he sent over an entire team. It was no cost to the city, as you would hear, and Mr. Ford is continuing, want to continue to serve on the board. So I highly recommend that we consider Mr. Ford for this position. Absolutely. All right. Any further comments? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-45.
Municipal Order authorizing the approval and submission of a fiscal year 2022 annual plan for the Housing Choice Voucher Program.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Perigin.
Thank you, Mayor. Each year HUD requires us to do a annual plan, and this is just our time to do that. It's 75 days prior to the beginning of the fiscal year. We have with us tonight Alvera Ramek, who runs our Housing Division, along with Brent Belcher, I'm sorry, Brent Childers. And they have prepared the memo for you and enclosed the application for HUD, the renewal, basically a checklist of everything that we're going to promise to do and keep our program running efficiently and effectively. So Brent, Alvera, do you all have any comments or want to provide any highlights? But they're here for answering any questions you might have.
That little Brent.
Mayor, I would like to take an opportunity to ask a question.
Absolutely.
Since you're here, I would love to just hear how the additional housing vouchers that we've got over the past couple of years, how it's going, and, or not years, but over the past year.
Yeah, so what Commissioner Beasley Brown's referring to is the addition of the mainstream vouchers that we received, I think 70 in the last about 12 months or so, 79. That's why she knows all the stuff, which are dedicated to non-elderly disabled families. And so we're rolling those out. We're ahead of our lease-up schedule for those. We just started our second round of lease-up on the last 40 that we received, but we're ahead of anticipated lease-up for those. We were able to pull off our waiting list and get those out into the community. So our goal is always to take all the resources that we can from Washington and use those to the benefit of our community, and so that's what we're trying to do.
Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions or comment from Mr. Belcher?
Little Brent, I'll make a comment. Thank you all so much for all you do out there. It's a, his, his part of this organization is like, I used to call the Borg. It's so many moving parts and pieces and juggling and everything else. So you make it look easy, and I know it's not.
Likewise. I think that, you know, having like 70, I wish we could have more, because I know our community needs more, but just thank you for like just getting the ones that you can and trying to help out the community as far as we can right now.
I'd just, I'd like to, while I have the chance, just commend Alvera for the job she does of managing and running this program. It's, it's, it's literally award-winning from HUD and highly, highly efficient and effective, and she does it with, you know, a great group, a great team, and Alvera just does a fabulous job. I'd like to thank her for that.
All right. It was a pleasure to meet you, Alvera. All right. No further comments? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2021-12. This is our second reading and is binding.
Ordinance permitting zoning ordinance. Ordinance permitting Articles 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8 of the zoning ordinance of the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, as recommended by the City County Planning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mazel, second reading. So this, we've been through this. It had a unanimous five, no vote last time. There's no further discussion? All right. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2021-13, first reading, non-binding.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 4.3658 acres from RE residential estate in F Flood Plain to RM4 multifamily residential in F Flood Plain located on Old Scottsville Road, presently owned by MFG Bowling Green Land, LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Carlos Bailey, and I do believe we have some discussion. We need to set up the room for this.
I think we do. We have Matt Cook here, who represented us on this case. If you'll recall, this is a case that the board voted to reject the recommendation of the Planning Commission. That decision was then appealed to Judge Grace, who reversed the decision. Matt Cook represented us. It went on to the Court of Appeals, a motion for discretionary review, and now it's back before you all. So I think he's just going to lay a brief history, and then each attorney is going to make, I guess summarize their arguments for 15 minutes each, and then any questions you all have, you may ask them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to the Commission. I'll be brief. I'll just give you a procedural history, and then I'll let Mr. Davenport and Mr. English make their arguments to you. In November of 2017, MFG Bowling Green Land, LLC filed an application with the Planning Commission to rezone 4.3658 acres of land on Old Scottsville Road from the zoning designation RE residential estate in F Flood Plain to RM4 multifamily residential in F Flood Plain in order to develop a maximum of 56 apartment units. At the same time, the applicant also moved to amend the future land use map designation for the property from low-density residential to moderate-density residential. That came before the Planning Commission for a hearing in December of 2017. The Planning Commission determined to deny the request to amend the flow map, and then the applicant requested to proceed on its rezoning request based on the record made at that same public hearing. There were several residents that testified in opposition to the rezoning. At the conclusion of the proof at the public hearing, the Planning Commission voted by a vote of five to three to recommend the rezoning. The matter then came before this body, and the City Commission in 2018 by a vote of two to three or three to two, depending on how you look at it, voted to not accept the Planning Commission's recommendation. When that happens under Kentucky law, the legislative body, in this case, the City Commission, is required to make its own findings of fact explaining its decision. An attempt at making those facts was made, and that went through the first and then the second readings, and the ordinance to rezone was defeated. The applicants then took an appeal to the Warren Circuit Court. Warren Circuit Court received briefs from the parties, from the applicant, from the city. Mr. English's client was allowed to intervene in that matter, and he also filed a brief. We had oral arguments before Judge Grace, and then he ultimately issued an opinion which remanded the case back to the City Commission for additional factual finding. He found that the factual findings made by the Commission were insufficient, in his view. We then determined to take an appeal of Judge Grace's decision to the Kentucky Court of Appeals, and we went through that process, and the Court of Appeals ultimately affirmed Judge Grace's ruling, and then we asked the Kentucky Supreme Court to, to accept review of the case, and as is common in, in most of their filings, they determined not to grant that motion. So we're left with Judge Grace's decision as the law of the case, and the case is now back to this body on remand, and Judge Grace's ruling is now final. And what he said was, this body should now, at this point, one, one of the following. One, follow the Planning Commission's recommendation. Two, make adequate findings of fact and reference the evidence used to support those conclusions based upon the Planning Commission's record. Or three, this, this body have your own trial type hearing and make adequate findings of fact their own. And what you have elected to do is to not have your own trial type hearing where we would hear witnesses from both sides. You've invited the attorneys for the parties, Mr. Davenport and Mr. English, to come talk to you this evening for an argument type hearing, and they're going to present their views on the matter to you. And once that's done, you can ask some questions if you like, and then you can decide either to accept the recommendation, which would not require you to make any additional findings of fact, or you may decide to reject the Planning Commission's recommendation, which would then require you to make your own independent findings with references to the evidence. So these gentlemen are ready to go, I think, and I think, Chris, you were going to go first, I think?
I was told to go first.
All right. So, there we go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Mr. Mayor, good afternoon. I'm not sure what the Commission's protocol is with this. Would you like me to take it off?
It's up to you at this point.
Okay.
You have your social distancing.
Okay. I would rather you hear me clearly, if that's okay with you all.
It is.
Okay. Mayor Alcott, it's a pleasure to be in front of you for the, for the first time. Commissioner Bailey, Commissioner Hill, I think I've been for you before, but first time with this iteration. Commissioner Beasley Brown, Commissioner Perigin, it's just good to be back doing something in person. So I think Mr. Cook did an excellent job of outlining, outlined the issues here, or at least the three options you have. As he stated, you can either adopt the recommendation of the, of your Planning Commission, or you can reject that, in which case you'll have to make your own findings. What I would submit to you at the outset is, in 2018, when this issue came before, that City Commission at that time, that City Commission tried its best to state findings consistent with what the opposition had argued that would support a rejection of the zoning recommendation, and those findings have been found insufficient at the Circuit Court level, at the Kentucky Court of Appeals level, and ultimately at the Supreme Court of Kentucky level. So at the outset, I would submit to you, we don't have a new record. It is the same record. Based upon that record, your Planning Commission, that was appointed in part by this board, in part by other boards, including the county, found that this rezoning should go forward. And I'm going to, even though I don't really have the burden here, I feel, I feel like the burden is on the opposition, because they would have to convince you of findings that are supported by the record, that are compelling, and that would uphold appellate review. And so far, that's been denied three times. But even though I don't have the burden, I think it's incumbent, or at least helpful, if I restate the proof upon which the Commission made that recommendation, the Planning Commission made that recommendation. So what I would point out, and I know Mr. Cook's talked to you all about this, Ms. Haattire's talked to you about this, you've been provided the hearing record from 17, I'm sure you've looked at it. So I don't mean to insult anyone's intelligence or assume you haven't looked at it, but I just want to kind of highlight the points, as I see it, that the Planning Commission heard that night. The issue was about four and a half acres. And the four and a half acres, I'm going to show you one of the exhibits that's in the record. The four and a five, the four and a half acres that is owned by my client adjoins another property upon which the current Cumberland Trace apartment complex sits. So if you all can see this, the current apartments are in the red. The, the piece of land we're talking about is here, outlined in black. This being Old Scottsville Road. And so what was before the Planning Commission was basically an extension of this development onto this four and a half acres. The highlights of that proposal was that there'd be no access on Old Scottsville Road. The property would continue to have access via its current access on Cumberland Trace Road. There'd be no more ingress or egress constructed. There'd be no other ingress or egress allowed. In total, they were proposing actually 33 more units than they were already approved for on their existing piece of property. So when we talk about the number of vehicles or those sorts of things, it really wasn't a significant addition to the complex as opposed to what was already approved. It was going to go on this piece of property there that I've showed you. They also committed to a 40-foot landscape buffer along Old Scottsville Road, simply for aesthetic purposes, with dense vegetation, including six-foot tall trees at planting. In other words, they were going to come plant little seedlings that would eventually become, they were going to be six feet tall when they planted. That was a condition they agreed to. They were going to be bound by it. So that came before the City, before the Planning Commission. And in your record, you're going to note a few things that Mr. Peterson, the Director of Planning Zoning, said at that hearing. He said these apartments are consistent with what's already built. Basically, they're the exact same design. I think 75% brick, stone, or hardy, a very high-quality facade material, the highest you got. He said it's actually, they're consistent with the, at that point, the drake across the road was under construction. 288 units, including three-story buildings, that since this property's zoning in '08, and I'm going to get to that in a minute, how important that is, since '08, that property across the road had been rezoned and is, was then being developed as multifamily with three-story buildings. A very much more substantial development than what we're talking about tonight. He said that the request was consistent with that development. He said this request was consistent with the commercial property immediately to the left of this property. He said it was consistent with the commercial property immediately across the road from this property, across Old Scottsville Road. So what we, what we presented that night, really, was that this property in question was essentially an island, an island sitting amongst multifamily and commercial properties. Now, ultimately, what the Planning Commission heard was all of the developments, all of the improvements, all of the changes that had occurred since 2008. Now, that's an extremely important date. Here's why. The RE properties we're talking about were zoned RE in 2008. If you read the briefs, the opposition throughout this case has repeatedly said, well, the properties were zoned in '11, and the properties had a development plan in '12. Not these properties. It was a point that was consistently either misunderstood or misrepresented by the opposition in this case. The 2011 zoning was for the red property. The 2012 development plan was for the red property. The property we're talking about had not been rezoned since 2008, when it went residential estate. So what the Planning Commission was hearing that night is what has happened, what have been the changes of a social, an economic, or a physical, what changes of those natures have happened since this planning, this property's zoning in '08? And what the board heard was extensive, as reflected in your notes. What the board heard was that all this property in the interim that's in per- What the board heard was that all this property in the interim that's in purple had been zoned commercial. What the board heard was this property in red had been zoned multifamily. What the board heard, across from Old Scottsville Road, this property in purple had been rezoned commercial. This property in black had been rezoned multifamily RM4. The other thing the board heard is that since 2008, our joint Planning Commission had adopted what we call the future land use map. Here's our subject property. That was enacted in '12, okay, since 2008. And what the Planning Commission was reminded at that hearing is that in 2012, with the enactment of that future land use map, now all of the land across Old Scottsville Road was designated mixed-use residential. This would include the property that was rezoned commercial, as well as the property that was rezoned RM4 multifamily, as well as all of these other parcels, some of which still remain zoned ag, but now had a future land use designation of mixed-use residential. What can you do in mixed-use residential? Multifamily and commercial. Back to my point, since 2008, these three little RE lots have now been placed on an island that was not anticipated in 2008. I don't know how you can frame an argument that that was anticipated in 2008, when the future land use map had not even been conceived yet. It didn't come about till 2012. And in the interim, all these other properties are developed. So that was a seminal issue, and that's what the Planning Commission decided by a vote of five to three. Now, throughout the process, my opposition's always said it was by the slightest of margins. I would submit to you, the Planning's Commission margin was twice the margin of the City Commission. The City Commission voted three to two, a difference of one. I think, Commissioner, Perigin, you were the only commissioner that was on the board then that's still now, so you probably, you know, you may have a recollection of some of these hearings. So, that was the process. That's what the Planning Commission heard, and they voted to approve it. As I said, it came to the City Commission at the first reading. The city attorney, Mr. Harmon at that time, made it very clear, if you look at the minutes of that hearing, that on the first reading, they could take a vote, but they were gonna have to come up with findings. And Mr. Harmon said at that hearing, we will have to set out to find findings that are substantial and that are significant enough to support a rejection if you're gonna choose to reject the Planning Commission's decision. So they did that between the first and the second reading. Those findings have now been found to be insufficient. I neglected a few other improvements to the area that I need to talk about, because the Planning Commission heard this as well. Since 2008, there had been substantial improvements to Cumberland Trace Road. That road was widened. The intersection with US 231 Scottsville Road was improved dramatically. The intersection between US 231 and I-65 was changed dramatically. Some of us, I know I remember, before those improvements were made, how the traffic would back up on Scottsville Road at the I-65 intersection, all the way past Cumberland Trace. And at Cumberland Trace, the traffic would back up, you know, well past Old Scottsville Road. And so what the Planning Commission heard, that was another improvement, a change of physical nature that had occurred in the area since 2008, that made this zoning proper and made it the right thing to do. I talked a little bit about the Drake. I think that was an important factor the Planning Commission heard. Again, the Drake is found on this map. It's this large area in black. That's two-hundred-and-eighty-eight units. By the time we got to the Planning Commission in December of '17, had been approved by the Planning Commission, and were under development by that point. A very large multifamily development, and really, the opposition at the Planning Commission, I think the fact that this development really belies their opposition. Their opposition was essentially, and what the City Commission said that didn't get upheld, was that there hasn't been really any development in this area, okay, which they tried to define the area basically as these three parcels, and they said there's no multifamily on Old Scottsville Road. Well, folks, that's just not true. The Drake development, although it has no access, abuts Old Scottsville Road, no different than my client's application. It abuts, but has no access. So, throughout this process, that was the chief argument that the opposition made. Well, there's been development, but not really on Old Scottsville Road, completely ignoring that mixed-use residential designation I showed you on the other map, that has all the commercial and all the multifamily component to it on the flume across the road there. What else did they say? Well, if you look at the opposition that testified, virtually all of them live somewhere out Old Scottsville Road. And to a T, what they said was, I don't like looking at apartments when I drive home. Now, that sounds like I'm being flippant. That's what their testimony was. I don't like to see it when I pass by. Regardless how I feel about that personally, you can't look at what was approved on Old Scottsville Road and suggest that you can traverse this lane without seeing multifamily development, because it sits all right here already. And the Planning Commission knew in '17 what these plans were. So, I never found that argument to have much merit. I would respectfully submit, I don't think that the Planning Commission did either. Now, Mr. English is gonna talk to you in a minute, and I don't know exactly what he's gonna say, but I know what the record says. So I know what the arguments have been in the past. And the arguments in the past were, well, this was all anticipated. I don't know how you could have anticipated this in 2008, when we didn't even have a flume in 2008, when we didn't have road improvements in 2008, when developments like the Drake and the commercial development on the front weren't even a dream, because those things were never possible until the flume was passed in 2012. So, other than that argument, and reference to the 2011 zoning, that had nothing to do with this parcel, it only had to do with the red parcel, the opposition has cited those two things, and then this idea of the aesthetic drive. It's ironic to me that usually when I have a zoning case, county residents say, keep that development in the city. I don't usually have county residents say, don't develop in the city. So that irony's not lost on me here. This is a city property, that's why we're before this body here. So, in closing, and I can't hit everything in this record, and Hillary said I can't, she said, you're not, you've got fifteen minutes, and I'm probably all very close to it. So I can't hit everything, but from my viewpoint, that's what's most important. For whatever reason, the iteration of the City Commission at that time decided not to follow their Planning Commission's advice. They set out to try to find a reason not to do that. That reasoning has been rejected now at every appellate level possible besides the US Supreme Court. Thank goodness we never had to go there. So it's back to you. I would submit to you, the easiest thing to do, and the right thing to do, is to follow that commission's recommendation. The body that is trained to hear these matters, that has delegated that authority, this body's done that, and to pass this rezoning. It's four years coming, but it's the right thing to do. I know that you all will have an opportunity to ask questions, if there's something that you would like me to clarify, or if I made something as clear as mud, I'm happy to do that. But for my fifteen minutes, that's what I would submit to this board.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport. You actually hit the fifteen minutes right on the head, so, well done. Mr. English will allow you to set up, and when you're ready, we'll allow you, you can begin, sir.
Mayor Alcott and members of the commission, it's an honor to be before you today. I represent many of your constituents, constituents who live on Old Scottsville Road, Deer Valley, Deer Meadow, Bent Creek, and Chestnut Hill, all within the city of Bowling Green. I quite frankly, strongly disagree with Mr. Davenport's representation of what Judge Grace ruled, and I hope that you will call upon your counsel, and also Mr. Cook, to point out to you exactly what Judge Grace said in his opinion. Judge Grace said that the ordinance as drafted did not include specific facts referencing the record in order so that the court could go back and determine what the specific facts that were relied upon by the commission in passing the ordinance formed a basis for its decision. He in no way and in no manner ever criticized or ever said that the finding of this commission that rejected the zoning recommendation of the Planning Commission was an error. That was not what his decision was. His decision was that you, that the ordinance, and quite frankly, I've gotta accept some of the responsibility of that, because I reviewed it when, after Mr. Harmon drafted it, Hamp Moore reviewed it. We all thought that it included sufficient facts, but Judge Grace said, no, you need to remand it and do one of the things, include those additional facts as to why the decision should not be recommended. I wanna also talk to you a little bit about what the Planning Commission recommended. Please understand that the Planning Commission's first vote on this was that to reject the applicant's request to amend the future land use map. That was defeated on a seven to one vote. Typically, under our zoning ordinance, once that is done, the matter goes no further. That's the end of it. In this case, the zoning, the applicant, MFG, requested that the Planning Commission move forward without making specific recommendations. And if you go back and if you review the record, you see a very tortured commission try to figure out what to do. But they then voted to approve the recommendation, or to approve the zone change, even though it had rejected the future land, amending the future land use map. That in and of itself shows why this commission, when it considered the matter, decided that it was not appropriate to rezone this property, is part of the basis. What additionally do I think you need to understand about this? And I think there's a little bit more history to this particular zone change request than what has been set forth. To understand this, you have to go back to 2011, and this is all in the record, when this original development plan was submitted to the Planning Commission along with the proposed development. The development plan provided that a long Cumberland Trace, that that area was to be developed as commercial property. The area in the middle was to be zoned high-density residential. But these three lots, which specifically abut Old Scottsville Road, were to remain single-family, low-density residential. It was the recognition by the owners of the property that that was the appropriate zone, zoning and development plan for this property. My clients didn't oppose that. They agreed that that was the appropriate development plan for this property. In 2017, when MFG filed its application to amend the future land use map, and also to change the zoning, they also submitted a development plan. And I would strongly encourage you to look at what that proposed development plan is for this project. And you've got to realize what it is they want to do. They want to build a one-hundred-and-twenty-three-space parking lot, forty feet from Old Scottsville Road. They also want to build three forty-eight-foot, three-story buildings within approximately eighty feet of Scottsville Road. These things had, there is nothing, nothing out there that is consistent with that proposed use. That's part of the reason that my clients were so upset about this, and your constituents were upset about this, is because there is nothing out there anywhere like that on Old Scottsville Road. As I mentioned before, the Planning Commission voted to reject the amendment of the future land use map. It found that the future land use map, which was adopted and which found, was appropriately designated, that these three lots were appropriately designated low-density, single-family lots. And why is that? Because that's what we planned for. That's what we wanted, this area. When you look at the future land use map, you see where the commercial development and the multifamily development has taken place. It's a long Cumberland Trace. That's what we planned for. That's where we designated that this type of development goes. There is no multifamily development along Old Scottsville Road. There at the corner, yes, those areas are designated as multifamily. But the development that Mr. Davenport referred to, you know what's right there next to the road? It's a large drainage basin, a huge drainage basin. There are no parking lots. There are no three-story buildings within eighty feet of the road. It's not what's there. What we would ask you to do is to go back and to look at the testimony of those who testified at the hearing. People who testified that included Dr. Olis Graboski and Dr. Jack Glasser, who all said, there's no changes on Old Scottsville Road. Yes, there are changes that have taken place on Cumberland Trace, because that's where we planned it. That's what we set forth in our future land use map, as is what was to be designated. It was not, it's, there is absolutely no multifamily housing, once you get away from that initial corridor on Cumberland Trace. We also ask that you accept the testimony of Phil Jaggers, Mike Murphy, Linda Keen, Tim Canaly, Gerald Bova, and Gretchen Collins, who all testified that this area, that there has been no significant change in the area as set forth in the flume. We also ask that you accept the testimony of Planning Commission Director Ben Peterson, who, when asked, are there any one-hundred-and-twenty-three-space parking lots currently along Old Scottsville Road, said no. We also ask, request that you accept his testimony when asked, are there any three-story apartment buildings forty-eight feet in height within eighty feet of Old Scottsville Road? He said no. buildings 48 feet in height within 80 feet of Old Scottsville Road?", he said, "No." You need to recognize the inconsistency of what it is that the planning commission found by first voting overwhelmingly not to amend the flume, but at the same time, voting to accept the zone change. You should look at the requirements of KRS 411-123, I believe I have that, excuse me, KRS 10423, which, excuse me, KRS 10213, that which is the statute that is relied upon. The statute, in order to support this zone change, says there have to be major, major changes of an economic, physical, or social nature within the area involved, which were not anticipated in the adopted comprehensive plan and which has substantially altered the basic characteristics of the area. There have been no major changes in this area that have altered the physical or social nature of Old Scottsville Road. It was specifically decided that when the adoption of the flume, that this area was supposed to be low-density. That was the, what the flume designated. You'll have an opportunity, I know, to answer any questions, or I'll have an opportunity to ask your questions. But there, here's what we request that you do. We request that you accept the recommendation of your planning commission, that the future land use map should not be amended and that the applicants have not met the requirements to demonstrate that that should be amended. We also request that you make factual findings that support a rejection of the amended zone change. And the specific basis, factual basis should be that there is no multifamily development on Old Scottsville Road once you turn off of Cumberland Trace. Yes, there on the corner, there are some, but there is nothing like this on Old Scottsville Road. And I'll be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Mr. English. At this time, the commissioners may ask questions to Mr. Davenport or to Mr. English or ask questions that you may have, and they could give chances for response. I will ask that we keep them concise and the responses concise to answer the questions. And we've heard the testimony, we've had the testimony. All the commissioners have been provided a copy of the previous testimony of all the members actually in the planning and zoning as well. So we have that for a read, but thank you both. Commissioner, at this time?
I have, I guess, one question. It'll be for both gentlemen. I actually went over there and kind of drove past Old Scottsville Road. I wanted to see it, and I wanted to see how far it was. And I did see the Drake and I saw the other apartment. I would like, and I saw the water basin to the retention. I would like to know, I guess, from the street until, I guess, the parking lot, how many feet is that from the Drake? And then from the street until the parking lot from the FMG property, how many feet is that?
Yes, Mr. Davenport.
Commissioner Bailey, I'm not sure how far it is to the Drake. I do believe there were some questions of Mr. Peterson by Mr. English at that hearing about relative distances. I can tell you that for the development that was presented for my client, the distance of the parking lot to the road would have been in excess of 40 feet. The reason I know that is they committed to that dense landscape buffer along the entire length of Old Scottsville Road, so they couldn't put any parking lot within that landscape buffer, if that makes sense. So I know, I know it was in excess of 40 feet. I recall Mr. English asking Mr. Peterson some questions like that about the relative distances, but I can tell you for sure on our side, it would be in excess of 40 feet from the parking lot to the road. And the reason being, if you look at the design that was submitted on this application, the parking lot, the way it was oriented, would, the parking lot would be between the Old Scottsville Road and the buildings, so the buildings are as far off the road as you can get the buildings. Obviously, in the zoning ordinance, you have to have X number of parking spots for every bedroom that you build. So that's set out in the ordinance, how many parking spots you need.
How many feet, I guess, is the FMG property right now?
Oh, the current, the apartment says, I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, okay.
I could probably, if I get the engineering renderings that are in my record on appeal, I could probably figure that out. It will take me a little bit, but that, it would be in those renderings. It was just, you'd have to decipher that some.
[inaudible]
They are not, Commissioner, perishing. Correct. I think literally the city-county line is my client's property.
If I mistake, I apologize. It wasn't intentional. I just, those were the, that was the area of the...
I was concerned I was leaving a whole bunch of those that needed a yard sign.
I'm sure they'd be happy to put one up. Again, I don't have the specific engineering drawings. The current distance to the buildings are probably at least 150, 200 feet, I would say. If I, and that, that is a guess. It's not based upon, on any drawing. The issue, again, is that this parking lot, there's nothing out there like that. It's, it is, there's a drainage basin and then the Drake is considerable distance, is going to be right up on there. I understand they're going to say that they're going to have some vegetation and a landscaping barrier, but that's, that's still dramatically different. It's inconsistent with anything that's in this area.
Enter. Do you want? All right. Ms. Hill?
Yes, if you don't mind. Ms. Hightower, do you mind explaining to our citizens watching and let them know why we as commissioners, are we able to respond to their emails or their texts regarding planning and zoning issues? Because as you can imagine, we have received emails and texts from a lot of people that these people are, the attorneys are referring to.
I know that this comes up a lot in planning hearings, planning and zoning hearings. This board, along with the county and the smaller cities, Plum Springs, Woodburn, those smaller cities, they, you all have determined to have a joint city-county planning commission. And each of those cities and the county have certain members that you've appointed, and they are the designated board to hear these matters. So they hear all of the evidence and then make a recommendation that then comes to you for properties that are in the city. It comes to you as a recommendation. You have an option to either have a whole nother full hearing where you would take testimony, basically rehash everything they've done, or have what we've done here, a summary type of hearing where they summarize the evidence that is already before, heard by the planning commission. And then as a board and individually, you all review what was presented to the planning commission, and you sit in sort of a quasi-judicial function. In other words, you are not making a whole new determination. You are reviewing the planning commission and determining whether you agree with it or not. Your decision is required to be based upon the evidence heard by the planning commission. It's required by due process. So if you talk to someone outside of this hearing, you are violating one or the other person's due process. So for example, if you took a call from the developer who Mr. Davenport represents, that is unfair to Mr. English's client and vice versa. So as in a quasi-judicial judicial role here, you're required to confine your decision to the evidence that has been heard by the planning commission, and that, that's the reason for that.
Thank you for asking that, Belinda.
Yes, thank you.
It's like I can't talk to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I need a little bit of clarification because I'm a little confused on, Chris, you're welcome.
Sue, can you use your mic?
Sorry about that. Thank you. I don't quite understand how the, the flume and the zoning kind of are inconsistent with each other when the commission, the planning commission went ahead and rezoned.
So I probably could have spent 30 minutes talking about that.
Oh, please.
And I know you don't want to hear that, but Mr. English is right when he referenced, I think he said 213, I think it's 100.212, but Chapter 100 is the statutory scheme that allows cities and counties to have zoning boards. That goes all the way back to the genesis of plan zoning, the Commonwealth. And 212 sets out the standard to change a zoning map amendment. It is the standard that this, that that planning commission voted on to approve. Okay? It's the major changes of social, physical, economic nature. But that, that statutory schemes allow cities, if they choose, to go a little further than that. And in addition to that basis, they can have other bases to, to, to use their zoning ordinance. Our city, our county, in 2012 elected to add another layer called this future land use map. Prior to then, we didn't have it. Didn't have it in '08. Didn't have it anytime till 2012. So right now, we, there are two bases, you can, at least two, there's actually a third we won't even get into, that you can request a zoning map amendment, basically a rezoning. You don't have to use the flume.
You're not required?
You're not required to. In fact, if this, if this city and county decided you had to use the flume in contravention of KRS 100, I don't think that'd be constitutional because the state, you have to adopt the state standard. Whether you have other standards or not are up to you. So as I said earlier, the flume is really a completely red herring, in my opinion.
And it's not written into this, this ordinance here either.
It, well, I would, I would say one thing. If you look at the first finding of the ordinance, it said that the city commission was rejecting the recommendation because the flume had not passed. Now, if that's a sufficient basis to overcome the rezoning, the Court of Appeals would have never struck down that ordinance. So I would call your attention to that. That should tell you right there that the flume and the KRS 100 standards are standalone. Just because you didn't get the flume doesn't mean you can't get the rezoning. If that was sufficient basis, that ordinance would have been upheld.
May I? This actually is KRS 102.13, and the statute, and I'm just going to read it to you. Section 1 is that before any map amendment is granting, the planning commission or legislative body or fiscal court must find that the map amendment is in, is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Okay? Or, in the absence of such finding, there has to be one or more of the following, and such findings shall be recorded in the minutes or records of the commission. The first is that the existing zoning, A, is inappropriate, which is, which there was no finding. B, and this is what they were going on, there, that there have been major changes of an economic, physical, or social nature within the area involved that were not anticipated in the adopted comprehensive plan and which has substantially altered the basic characteristics of such area. You can't just say, "Oh, well, there's some other apartment." You have to find that there were major changes. You have to find that the, that it's, that it was not anticipated in the current comprehensive plan, and you have to find that it's basically, that it has substantially altered the basic characteristics of this area. That's what the statute requires.
And I guess that's what I was asking you guys earlier, because I wanted to find out about the Drake. When I looked at that map that you guys had, is that I was looking at those changes and kind of finding out what the feet was. And I did drop through there and I saw like there was an auction. One of the properties was basically being auctioned next to the FMG. But when I looked at the Drake, I wish I knew what the feet was because I did see the FMG and it seemed like that it was very close to the, the property. I would love to know what, what the feet is because at that time, the Drake wasn't even built. I didn't know if Mr. Davenport wanted to say anything.
That's exactly right, Commissioner Bailey. When we were here in December 17, the Drake was not built. The Drake had been approved for 288 units. The Drake at that time, to be fair to Mr. English, I think that there was at least a concept or a potential development plan that had been discussed. But this gets kind of to the, to the, to my point when it comes to zoning cases. At a zoning level, when we talk about major changes, I'm not really talking about how far away the apartment that fronts Old Scottsville Road was built. That acreage was rezoned, RM4, all the way up to the road. Where a retention basin goes is largely up to the engineers. When the Drake was built, there was no restriction, and there was no evidence of this because it didn't happen, that they couldn't be X close to the road. When we rezone properties, unless those restrictions are in place, those buildings can go anywhere on those properties that the engineers can put the buildings, if that makes sense. So, you know, in hindsight, maybe the Drake is X and maybe my client's apartment is Y, but from a zoning standpoint, the entire property's RM4. The entire property can be developed that way. The only real limiting condition the Drake had was the 288 units. And so, you know, I would argue with my last breath that to say there's no multifamily on Old Scottsville Road is just absolute, if you made a finding of that, I would submit to you, that's absolutely untrue. That property fronts Old Scottsville Road. They don't have access. I concede that. They couldn't build a driveway from the Drake onto Old Scottsville Road, but my clients couldn't do that either because they agreed not to do that. So would my client's property touch Old Scottsville Road? Yes. Is it the only RM4 property touching Old Scottsville Road? No. Categorically, no. And in fact, the other properties that aren't even the Drake, if you look at the other map I showed you, have that mixed-use residential flume designation, which means the planning commission already says in the flume, since 2008, they've decided those properties, at least from a flume perspective, are compatible with multifamily development, all happening since 2008.
Commissioner Bailey, when the Drake submitted its application, it had to submit a development plan, and that development plan specifically showed that retention basin in the area where it's now located. That was part of the decision and basis for allowing that to go forward. To say that, that they could place the, the buildings anywhere they want to, quite frankly, is inconsistent with that development plan. They had to have that approved.
I have a few questions for Ms. Hightower, Mr. Hunt. I'm not sure who this goes to, but I first just want to ask about, in terms of looking at the, the question before us, because it's very different from our usual question of, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? So the question is, has there been substantial changes as well? We have to make this decision on. Are we basing that on what exists today or what existed when this case was first heard in 2017? in 2017?
We are basing that. What you are doing is reviewing the recommendation of the Planning Commission as it was made following that hearing. And you are to either accept that recommendation, just like if this was before you for the first time. You know the history of the reversal, but it's like you're just hearing this for the first time. You either accept that recommendation, you reject that recommendation with findings of fact that support your decision, or you have a full trial-type hearing, which you've determined not to do. So so you are reviewing the recommendation of the Planning Commission as it was made in 2018?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Well, Commission, yeah, December of '17.
December of '17. I think it was here in January of '18. So it's just like it was at that time. You're just reviewing that recommendation.
And if there were major changes of a substantial nature in December of 2017?
Right. And that's what the Planning Commission found. So you are reviewing that finding of the Planning Commission.
But when I look at page 12 and 13, in our packet that reviews the existing zoning and existing land use, and then page 14, which is an aerial view, that is what I can look at for knowing what the existing use was in 2017 in terms of page 12, what is zoned, and then page 13, the land use, and then just seeing what was built around in that time. And that's what I need to make my decision on, in terms of, were there substantial changes in that area that were not anticipated in the comprehensive plan based on those existing maps?
That as well as the testimony before. I know you've watched the hearings. So the testimony of all the witnesses and that were at the Planning Commission.
Was the Drake zoned in when we heard this case back in late December?
It was.
So that property across the street was zoned multifamily prior to this hearing?
Yeah. Okay. Just one clarification. Mr. English is right that they were subject to a detailed development plan.
Right.
But detailed development plans, we don't even do those anymore. But in those days, you did not submit DDPs with your rezoning application. Those came much later. You'd get you'd get rezoned, then you would do your engineer work, and you would decide, where am I going to put the retention basin? Where do I want to put my streets? Where do I put my utilities? You then came back to get a DDP approved. And a DDP is subject to revision at any time by the commission. It's a different animal than a rezoning. So he I agree with him in part. I disagree with him in part, too, though. When we were here in '17, it had been rezoned. But the idea of exactly where stuff was going to go, I, you know, hadn't gotten that far yet.
Mayor Alcott, I don't have any more questions, but I would like to make a comment before we vote. So just whenever it's time for that.
Yes. Any other questions from the panel? All right. Commissioners? All right, go ahead, Dana.
So reviewing the findings and the facts that are presented us in the staff report from the original hearing, I do see that the from the flume on page 11, that the flume had anticipated, you know, growth and development along Cumberland Trace. And when I look at the existing zoning and existing land use and the aerial, I see that there is there was not in 20 December 2017, any major development beyond, you know, that same area, right? Of course, right there at the entry to Old Scottsville Road, which fronts Cumberland Trace Road, I see that there is development there. But I also see that there is, you know, great care taken to both protect the character and nature of the residential low-density nature of Old Scottsville Road, and how they both crafted the future land use map, and then the existing zoning, and then also in the existing land use. It all kind of flows together, allowing this growth of these multifamily units along Cumberland Trace. And and then allow and then at the entry to Old Scottsville Road. But then, once you start at the single-family units that they want to rezone here, I see that across the street, it's ag and single-family. And the existing use is single-family or vacant. And so at that time, it was it's all those that they want to rezone have not changed substantially. It was all single-family ag. And I think it matters that we, and it does make a difference, to allow that development along Cumberland Trace. And that's good. That's good growth, that has a vision of the type of things we want to protect in our community while allowing us to grow and develop. And so I I agree with the original commission's decision. And I can see here the facts before us, that that is exactly right. There were no substantial changes of any kind in this area. And that that there were that the developments that have happened were anticipated in the future land use map as presented in front of us. Thank you.
Dana, the the brown across from from this proposed rezoning property, it says mixed
use.
That's the future land use map. That's not the exist. We have to make ours based on the existing land use. That is the future. That is not what changed. So we had to say, were there substantial changes of of not nothing? This is not, we're not debating the future land use map. What we're debating are, were there existing at the time of 2017, December 2017, were there substantial changes on in this area here on Old Scottsville Road? And there were none. It's all single-family agriculture.
Well, the Drake wasn't considered substantial. I I'm not, I guess I'm a little confused.
Now, that so in the flume, you can see that that was anticipated and that was rezoned there. And that they, as part of what Mr. English had said, it was built way, way further back, again, so that it retains this same nature along Old Scottsville Road until you get to that entry point, right? You can see that the Drake, if you go on the existing zoning, it ends there, right across the street where this other one wants to rezone. So it would go way further back than the Drake does. Right now, both the Drake and is it commercial, Ms. Hightower, on page 12? Is that what that is, across the street from the Drake, right across from the F in blue circle? It's hard to tell with the colors.
That F, I believe, is like where the water basin is actually at.
That's the flood plain. I think that 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 is HB.
Highway Business.
Highway Business.
Yeah. So that that Drake, it's it's still consistent with that area that is frontage. And then you can see that all this behind it is is ag and single-family that existed at the time. So none of that had been changed.
And I'll tell you that I I drove over there, and I wanted to see, and I saw like how close it was. And I know that, I guess, the Drake, at the time, it was already in 2017, the DDP was already there. But even after it was built, I see that it was so far away from that road. So I don't see that there was a major substantial change when I look at it. Then I looked at the the property of FMG, and I saw how close it was. I actually stopped the car and just kind of wanted to walk. And I was like, if they move this any further, they're going to be closer to the road. Then when you keep driving down, I saw nothing but residents. I saw homes. I didn't see anything else. I do think that if we bring it up, there would be a possible substantial change if we bring the property up from where it is. Even though the Drake wasn't built, today, when you see this built, it's still so far away from the 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 road that it doesn't change the way the properties exist today. So I think that there hasn't been a substantial change, a major substantial change.
So are these arguments, Mr. English, any different from the arguments that were presented when this original 3-2 vote against this project was submitted to the Circuit Court? And what is different from what is being said up here at this moment from what was presented at that time?
There are different questions. To answer your question, these were basically the same types of issues that were discussed, perhaps in greater detail today than they were. But the record is still the same. I would go back and and say that that the commission in 2000, in January 2018 and February 2018, my recollection is that there was a lot of discussion about the flume and about the fact that that the commission, the Planning Commission, had rejected that change. And and what were the substantial economic major changes that had taken place that were not anticipated? And again, I don't want to to place myself in the role of the commission, but I think there was a serious question. You know, if if there if we haven't demonstrated that the flume was wrong, that the comprehensive plan, these were all anticipated. This is what we we planned for. And I think that was a substantial basis for the vote, vote, to the best of my recollection. And and I'm not trying to to dodge your question. I'm just trying to to be as accurate as as possible. But but the record's the same.
Mayor Alcott, can I follow Ms. Hightower and ask her a follow-up question? Would you mind reading us what the findings that the first commission wrote?
The Planning Commission?
No.
Oh, sure. Sure.
That way we know what their commission, what their statements were that were inadequate.
I can do that. And to answer your question, Mayor Alcott, the fight, the arguments are the same. But in watching the Planning Commission hearing, I will say this, the most of the time was spent addressing the flume amendment. And then, when that did not pass, Mr. Davenport went on with his argument to rezone based upon the changes. Now, Commissioner Beasley-Brown and I talked about this yesterday. The arguments for both are the same. So I don't think the arguments here in the record are any different. I just think we've spent all of our time on the changes because the there was no appeal of the decision on the flume. Does that make sense?
It does, because I fear that we're heading down the same path of argument that was previously rejected. And that if we continue down this path, we're going to find ourselves in a full rehearing. And the full rehearing, if my understanding, will take new circumstance into evidence that has changed significantly since this was previously disapproved.
I think there's confusion of the question. I think it's one where it's being interpreted, your question's being interpreted, is, is the arguments that the lawyers made to us today substantially different than the arguments that were made to the Planning Commission? And that answer is no.
Right.
But I think you're asking, are the arguments that Commissioner Bailey and I made today, is it any different than the original commission made? That's his question.
Gotcha. Okay. Your question is about the questions the commissioners had.
Yes.
B, the commissioners, because we had an argument that stated, backed up the 3-2, no vote.
Right.
And it was rejected.
Okay. So so the findings that were made were that the Board of Commissioners disagreed with the Planning Commission that there had been major changes of an economic, physical, or social nature within the Old Scottsville Road area, which were not anticipated in the adopted comprehensive plan, and which have substantially altered the basic character of the Old Scottsville Road area. The Board of Commissioners finds that while there have been changes involving commercial and residential developments, along Cumberland Trace Road, those commercial and residential changes were limited to the Cumberland Trace Road area and were anticipated in the comprehensive plan. And the Board of Commissioners further finds that there have not been any major changes of an economic, physical, or social nature which were anticipated in the comprehensive plan, and which have substantially altered the basic character of the Old Scottsville Road area. And that area remains a low-density residential area. What Judge Grace said, he did not say that there was not substantial evidence to support this finding. What he said is, I don't know what this finding was based upon, because there was no evidence referred to. For example, was it because of the land use maps? Was it because of testimony? Is there some evidence that supports a finding that these changes did not occur? So.
So my statement of, I see evidence from these maps, is findings of fact that were missing from the original commissioners.
Right. There would have to be, if 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 this board were to vote again to reject the Planning Commission's recommendation, we would come back with an ordinance that rejects that with specific findings, again, if it's based upon the existing land use map at the time or the character. There would have to be citations to the record. And then at that point, I anticipate there would be another appeal, at which point Judge Grace would review whether that finding is supported by substantial evidence instead of there isn't any particular evidence cited to. Does that make sense?
But I'm citing evidence when I point to this record, correct?
Right. So if there were another appeal, he would not be saying, I can't tell whether there was substantial evidence to support it. He would be reviewing whether the evidence was sufficient to support it. Instead of, it's too conclusory, there is no evidence cited to. If that makes sense.
Absolutely.
I would like to say, thank you, Mr. Davenport and Mr. English, for your time tonight. I'm sure both of you, whichever way it goes, is ready for this to be over. Also want to thank Planning and Zoning. And as a commissioner, I feel like we're going down a slippery slope if we start rejecting everything Planning and Zoning brings to us. And if we're going to do that, we might as well do away with Planning and Zoning and let everything come to us, and we'll just make the decision. So as you can imagine, with that said, I will be supporting the Planning and Zoning vote. That is going against a lot of people that are friends of mine. But I do believe, as a commissioner, I have to stand behind the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I would just make, can I make a follow-up comment, Mayor Alcott? So I totally agree. That's why 98% of all planning and zoning decisions, we unanimously, you know, support the Planning Commission. When I watched all, I don't know how many hours, my children were quite upset that I was taking the DVD player and taking so much time in front of the TV to review the entire record. It was a very unique situation that happened, where the Planning Commission rejected the future land use map amendment. Then the commission made a motion to deny the request to rezone based on being inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. Then Mr. Moore and Mr. Peterson had to confer with one another and say, I'm sorry, Commissioner, this is a very unique situation where you can't make a denial based on the way we normally do it, because he has made a unique argument that we're going to use this criteria about that it's substantially different. And so then the Chair of the Commission asked the commissioners, would someone please make a motion then? And no one. I mean, they just sat there and sat there and sat there, and no one would make a motion to vote on it. And then eventually, she just decided she would make a motion just to be able to vote on it. And so it was very clear to me, and part of why I think this is unique, it doesn't set a precedent of overturning everything they do, is that even after watching it myself, if I had been in their shoes, there to me, there was not enough preparation ahead of time, be prepared for this, we're not going to go down our normal route, be listening to this type of thing, and here's a type of motion you'll need to make, because we're going to be making it on substantial changes of an economic or other reasons. To prepare them for that, and you could see it was kind of chaos at the end. So so I would just say, yes, I totally agree with what you're saying, and I don't think that wants to become a habit. But but reviewing the record, it it was, I think, it was clear to me that there was some confusion at the end, especially with the the dual nature of how it landed. I think it was just was very confusing. And so I think that's, but so I just say, I agree that we shouldn't make it a habit. But I think reviewing the record, it was clear that it was a unique situation.
I'm going to agree with Belinda wholeheartedly. Our planning and zoning commissioners work very, very hard. And I think they 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 get it right. They're they're there for a specific reason, so things don't come directly to us, and therefore creates political types of situ, you know, decision-making. And and this was a this was a unique and a and a tough call for them, but they made the call. And and so I'm going to stand behind them.
All right. Any further discussion at this moment? Roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Peirogen?
Yes.
Bailey?
No.
Beasley-Brown?
No.
Alcott?
Yes. All right. Our next scheduled meeting is April 20, 2021. This by hereby. This hereby completes our meeting.